Okay, all right. We'll bring the meeting to order at 7:32.
We just play by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ready?
Here.
Sluts excused, seals excused, Henderson here, Audi excused, Schumaker?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Delakki?
Here.
Okay. Approval of agenda, the changes. The only thing that I can see is we're not going to be able to do the approval of minutes. Please go up your glass meeting. It'll need at least four. So put that off till next meeting.
Make a motion to accept the events as amended or the...
As amended.
The agenda as amended.
Home paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then we'll put the approval of minutes off to the next meeting. And now we have a site plan in front of us. So our mained corners. They want to use the basement for... No, yeah, I can't either.
Seminars.
Seminars, seminars in basement.
Seminars and meetings.
Okay, maybe you can read this.
Okay.
So it starts with the sheet that you wrote.
I don't think that's in here.
I can get some of the words. Have you read this?
Thank you. Okay, basically, we need, we're going to do seminars down there and it's...
Well, actually what I'd like you to do is read it verbatim.
Read it verbatim, okay. Purpose is to hold workshops and seminars in the basement. Will average about 25 people. We've made no physical changes to the building from the last approval.
Whoa, 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 excuse me, excuse me. We have what?
Made no physical changes to the building from the last approval. Dennis saw all that stuff before.
Okay, no, no, last approval, okay. And then the...
The fire department, okay, the area. We have all the lights and emergency signs and all that stuff is in there. Sprinklers are in. The signs, the signage is correct in the building and the emergency lights are there.
And then number two says signs what?
Are correct.
Are.
I had about 20 minutes to write this up when we found out we were having a meeting, so we'll get it back down here.
And then we have something from the fire department and something from the building inspector. So it's the first time that we've been asked to use any of the basements. So as far as the zoning, you can utilize the building in the basement. You can't use the building to host church meetings or any other meetings like that. Meetings can only be for what you're requesting and that would be for...
Workshops and seminars.
Well, no. What is your business?
My business is I'm a financial advisor and a senior advisor.
Okay, so applicant's name, purpose, development. Okay, so...
To bail cover meetings.
Yeah, so, okay, applicant's name really should be your name plus, but you're the applicant, but the, your, it's your business. And what's your business again?
Wealth Retirement Asset Protections for the W R E P building.
W R E P.
Okay, so how about, I'm going to write this down. So it's wealth. Management?
Retirement.
Retirement?
Asset Protection. It's on the top of the page.
Okay, wealth retirement what?
Oh, it goes, yeah.
You've got a business card, it'd be a lot easier.
There's a, there's a logo on the top.
The logo is right on the top of the page, try it.
Logo on the top of the page.
You got three, that's why.
Okay, this would be a lot easier.
Do you want some?
Because this really should be, because you're not really going to host a meeting, your business is going to host a meeting.
Well, and we'll host meetings too.
Oh, yeah, but this is...
So what would you host a meeting for?
Um, just meeting with our clients. If we have something going on with the boys, that's a big area, we could have them down there, something with our family. We get all the kids in from out of town.
You're using a commercial area for, I'm not quite sure if that's going to qualify.
The main thing then is seminars. That's what we're doing is seminars and workshops.
Well, okay, so with the business district, the business district is just that. So C1 has no parking requirements. There's a, there's a bunch of things that make C1. And one of the things that makes C1, the only residential stuff that you can do is an upstairs apartment. So that's not an upstairs apartment. So it's not, I'm not really sure if we could approve you for a residential use of your basement. Because the only, the only way that...
So I need it for the seminar and workshop.
Okay, so we just got...
So if I do a client appreciation, then I'll have that in the basement.
Well, that's still your business.
Right, right.
Yes, so...
And that's what it's for, seminars and workshops.
Okay.
We're good with that.
I'm sorry?
We're good with that.
We're good with that, okay. So the applicant's name really is not Cherry Barfield, but wealth retirement asset protection?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I don't work on the parking, is that...
C1, there's no parking requirement. We really do need parking. There's, there's no requirement.
Are you going to be holding your seminars more in the evening or...
Um, weekends, evening, generally when I've done them before. Um, we've been having at the library, there, I mean, the library for a while in the past. But usually during the evenings or on a weekend. Usually middle of the week because the end of the week or beginning part of the week is just harder to get people in. Generally Wednesdays and Thursdays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays are the best. Nice to do a seminar. I'm planning, I'm doing a social security seminar in a couple of weeks is what we, and we're going to talk about social security and when to draw and the choices and options available.
So do you do, do you usually go from like six to seven, six to eight, seven to nine?
Yeah, usually I stay for about a half hour, 45 minutes and ask, answer questions and then we schedule appointments.
So do you usually start at like six or seven though?
It just kind of depends. Usually around seven because people have to come home from work, they have to change, make sure kids are taken care of.
Right.
You know? Any other questions?
Dennis, do you have anything other than your letter?
Um, the comments here were that, you know, we talked about the single exit here. As you noticed, uh, we asked, she, yesterday, Fire Chief and I went through there yesterday, asked her to clear out the corridor, make sure that's open. Uh, there were some, a couple, uh, artificial plants, I guess, in the area. We just wanted to keep the corridor wide open and move the table. Uh, but the biggest thing was the, uh...
What's that?
The biggest thing was a roll of carpets that was underneath the stairwell, right outside the classroom area. I asked her that that should be moved. We're worried about a fire load and the chief agreed with that. And I think that should be moved prior to this happening. That makes that requirement.
Okay. Okay, so, um... You already have approval of the part of the basement for tenant storage. Where's that?
That is off on the side. And my files are down there too. We have client files down there, which you approved of the last time we were going in. The storage is under the garages.
So this drawing is a drawing of what?
That drawing is a drawing of the meeting area.
But not of the basement?
No, not of the whole basement. You already have the building plans for the whole basement. So the storage, the tenant storage and stuff is under the garages, which are right in the back of the building. And then there's the main storage area. We have files and stuff on the side. And the elevator, um, what do you call it, mechanical room. And Dennis has seen all that and approves of all that.
I really think your site plan should have showed in the basement. Not just the area that you're going to utilize. Since you've pre-approved some of the area, um, it should show the stairway, it should show the elevator, it should show, just like you came in before.
You came there already from before.
But this is a totally new application.
Okay.
So again, this is, should show the whole basement.
Okay, I can bring that to you, it's nothing's changed.
Where is your storage in relation to the podium?
Where the, when you... When you come down and you walk into the room, the main room. Thank you Becky. When you walk into the main room, you have the entrance. To the right is where all the storage is and the elevator stuff. The rest of that is, is poured walls, is poured walls. Outside here is the hallway where the, um, where the garages are. The storage area is under the garages.
Okay.
It's very simple.
What's this square right here?
Furnace. There is a furnace in there. And then my little podium and my few chairs. We're not even going to come close to the 49 occupancy. Generally you have 25, 30 people maybe max. I don't even have that many chairs down, down there. Did you count? I don't think we have that many chairs down there.
What was that?
Did you count the chairs?
No, but I took a square foot. Remember Stephen, I measured the area? And by the area, you can actually have a lot more people, but because you only have one exit, it restricts you to under, under 50.
Okay, and we're not going to even come close to that.
Any other comments?
There was something about in, in here somewhere about a tree blocking something.
But that was, that was removed, right Dennis?
That tree's gone?
There's no...
Blocking a second exit or something?
Well, according to...
That, that old, that was their old, fire department's old one. If you notice the date on that, it was back in February.
On the very bottom.
But the one we, the one we went to, when we went through there yesterday, they, she still had some, you know, some plantings down there. I asked her that that should all be left open on the first floor and then move the carpeting.
Okay.
And those are the two concerns I had down the basement. And the first floor corridor. And I wouldn't be opposed to, uh, looking at that prior to approval or contingent on the approval if the client commissioner wants it.
Yeah, I think that would be...
We moved the table already, Dennis.
Carpeting?
Um, we haven't had time. That was yesterday and I went to class. I had class in Flint yesterday.
That's 24 hours.
Yeah, right. I have four appointments today. And I'm breaking in a new secretary. I get back, when I get back last night, by 11?
Anybody have any comments?
There was a question about, I think it was already answered, about the backup power for the elevator. That's not necessary as long as it's, they keep the crowd below 50 or...
From what I've, I've been looking at the building code and I believe that deals with high rises. I, I, what I, I said I would not object to having a small group of people down there at this point. But if she was going to expand and have more, then we would have to really look into that closer. Because right now it's not obvious in the building code. I'd have to either call Lansing for interpretation or, or somebody else that knows the code better than I do. But as of right now, it looks like it's fine. It's, it's a water-based fire suppression system. There's not a lot of fire load down there except that carpeting and I don't have an issue with that. If she had like 100 people down there, I'd have a real big issue with it.
We're never going to do that.
I know, I'm just telling you that. But as, as it stands, if it's 20 to 25 people twice a month, that's fine.
Is there, are there partitions down there?
No, it's all...
It's fine.
There's no, so there's storage units, aren't the storage areas in...
In the corridor, yeah, they're, they're closed off with doors. But inside the actual room, it's just all wide open. Couple doors, like she said, a mechanical room and some other rooms, but that's all closed off.
Lisa?
Oh, please. They're not, they aren't in your furnace, but just make sure that it's marked in the list as storage furnace.
Dale?
No, I don't, I don't have anything.
Well, the, the planner said that it was approved, the, we get, it's an approved usage for the downtown area. So the only problem that I've got is the drawing. I think we should have a drawing of the whole basement and everything be labeled just like...
I'll bring it to you.
Okay, and that, that was...
You have it already.
It's a totally new site plan, so if we have it, then you should have it and it should be in this packet. So in order to sense it, the first time we've approved this basement for this usage, you should have that and it should, the whole entire basement should be drawn out and mapped and itemized. Anybody agree with that?
I agree, because I, Dennis said if I wouldn't have known that this square, if I would have asked if that was a furnace, I mean, we need to know that because that's important for the mechanical and fire safety. Can we approve it?
Well, we did, we did that kind of thing before, like she said she did before. We got to go back and detail it, you know? We just need the details on it.
No problem.
So we can look at it. You know, it's, I haven't been in this basement, so it's hard to visualize for me where the corridors are.
You're welcome to come.
Go in your basement anytime I want. Um, yeah, if you could see the whole basement, I can see how this relates to the rest of the basement.
The breaking plan.
Okay.
Why don't you guys come for the first seminar that we do on social security? You're welcome to come.
No admission?
No admission, nope. Just come, come in. We'll let you know what it is and we just direct people, you know, here's where it's going to be and we'd love to have you come. That way you guys can learn a little bit more about who we are and what we do too. Been taking care of families for generations and I actually have my first fifth generation family now, just, it's a college planning for one of the families. That's scary, it makes me old. But we work with businesses, we've been dealing with businesses for years.
Any other question? You're only considering the business related use, nothing for personal use or family?
So there'd be conditions if this was to pass, so that would be one. This would only be a business usage. It'd be limited to the amount of people. You'd have to keep the areas open as the fire department and building inspector indicated. There could be nor, no church or no school usage of that building. There could be, it's strictly approved for... Wealth Retirement Asset Protection LLC.
That's good then. We're good with that.
So what's that? Well, I'm, I want to do that.
Are we going to table it then until...
That's what I would like to see.
Well, I mean, all those conditions have to be written down, right?
Correct.
And we want to see a new plan.
I think we should have a new application that's actually done in the proper name.
Right.
And then maybe we could type this instead of write it.
Well, I had about 20 minutes because I'm not that savvy.
That's okay. And then, then we'd have a good drawing.
Complete basement.
Yeah, it would have to be 100% of the basement because this is our records. So if we go and we take this and put this in our records, this really says nothing about your basement.
Okay, well, I have, still have the map from the plane.
So and it should have all dimensions, where the stairway is, how big the stairway, where the elevator is, where, where the storage area, how big the storage area is, where, where your area is. It should have a north and a south on it.
When do you need this by?
The next meeting.
Well, I mean, I want to have my meeting, my seminar in two weeks. Can I bring it in?
Well, you could ask for a vote.
Can we do a vote? Contingent upon these, these things taken care of?
Well, we've conditioned the floor. Although this is quite a list, you know?
That we've never done this before and that this drawing is not...
Can you get it done in a day?
If you...
I can bring it in, within the next 24 hours.
If you wanted to pay for a special meeting, we could do that.
We can't get a vote now contingent that all this information is into you?
You could ask for a vote.
Let's do a vote and I'll have this to you in the next 24 hours.
I'd like to see all of us have it to look at, not just pretend, but so we can all, I can't make a decision on this till I see it. Yeah, I have to agree, I have to agree. I'd like to see it, see how it lays out in the basement. Exactly. She's, she's not much for great and if she wants to pay for the extra meeting, that's, I don't have a problem with that, but I want to see it myself.
When is the next meeting?
The next meeting is the first Monday of the next month.
And I have class Mondays and Thursdays in Flint for this doctor degree that I'm getting and, and four hours on Mondays and Thursdays and six hours on Saturdays. That's why I can't do this meeting.
Our meetings are the first Monday of every month unless there's a holiday as of this month.
And that's why when I talked to Becky and found out the meeting was on a Wednesday, I said I will be there, I'll get my stuff to you. She needed it that day, so we fulfilled the two week requirement. I can't be at that next meeting because I have class and will have by the end of the year a doctor degree in holistic medicine.
Well, this is pretty simple, but your information is not adequate for, for me personally to vote on this. If you request a vote this evening, I will vote no. And there's only four people here and it takes four to make a quorum.
Or we submit.
Can she send the representative in her stead?
Sure, oh yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as, as long as you have met all the conditions and stuff.
Right.
Next should not be issued.
Okay.
No?
I just wondered if she had a special meeting because she picked the date for a special meeting.
Um, yeah, you could do that as long as we could get a quorum for that meeting. Just because you picked it couldn't mean that we're going to be, everybody's going to be available, but you could do that. But a special meeting does cost $300. And your meeting next month will cost nothing.
We'll send a representative.
Okay.
Okay. So you want it for business usage only?
Yeah, well, first let's start out with this application.
Let's make sure we have everything there.
Have the application in...
Proper name.
In a proper name.
Okay.
Okay, and then state what you're going to do, what the, what the, what you're going to use this for. So then, and then your kind of cover letter, make that so it's either legible or typed.
Okay.
I'm sure that you have a computer and you could just do it on computer. So, uh, and then have your drawing as we stated with all the information of that basement. So, and the reason for the, the drawing, as you know, last time, you know, we had, we went over the drawing a bunch of times last time. And you have to have everything because this is a record. So if, if anything goes on in that building later on, we can go back. Okay, this is the approval for this. And we can't, it's not the planning commission's job to go back to your records, to pull the records out for your next submission at like this one, so...
I understand what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
So...
I hear we made no material changes.
Okay, all right, okay, then we're good.
How about the inspection by, uh, fire department, final inspection, make sure everything's cleared out there?
Yep, that'll be a part of the approval. So you will have some conditions of the approval.
Okay.
And that, but they're going to basically be what we've discussed already this evening. Okay, so I don't think we need a motion to table.
Postpone.
Postpone. So...
Till the next meeting.
Yeah. So this is, uh, can be postponed till the next meeting for different documentation, updated documentation. Okay, thanks very much.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, so the next thing is a public comment? You're the only public.
I was very surprised.
You were, I'm a chaplenter?
How little...
Oh, sorry.
Information was on the application. I didn't realize it was that, that bad.
Yeah.
But everybody, the actual site is very clean downstairs, very, other than the carpeting and the plants in the, in the corridor is very, very, uh, well done. But the only, my only stress is that, that if you do the conditions, that you limit it to two times a month and that limit of like 25 people, like she's saying.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that to me that number could grow into some party or whatever. I don't know. I think you've mentioned it.
We're going to have to do something with trash too because she has no trash, she still has no trash receptacle, no trash pickup, no nothing. So that's going to have to be addressed again.
What is she doing now for trash? Taking it home or something?
I have no idea. I mean, I mean... I mean, I've seen it up on the sidewalks, you know? It's distant places, it's not supposed to be.
She's gotta be doing something because she has a dog that she walks and she picks up after the dog. So something's gotta go somewhere.
So, I don't know. But thanks for saying that Dennis, because that's, nobody really sees from the audience what the, what the drawing is.
Right, and I was gonna draw it on the board and I went, you know what? Let her do it. You know, it's her, it's her application.
She knows, she's done this before.
Yeah.
So to kind of, for the audience, the viewing audience, the TV audience, when you come to planning, the, the, one of the big things of planning is to have a site plan. So the site plan really, and it states in the ordinance what you're supposed to have. You're supposed to have all the, all the setbacks from, uh, the roadways, from your neighbor, uh, the, the, the building, from the property lines, uh, from any right-of-ways. You're supposed to have a whole lot. Since this building has already been approved and we were just doing one floor of that building, and as we kind of stated through the, uh, through earlier in the meeting, we've never approved anything of, any usage of this building, that floor, other than some storage. So what we got was just a drawing that showed the meeting room. It didn't show the meeting room in relation to any other part of the building or any other part of the basement, nor did it show any of the other basement, just the meeting room. So the way the ordinance reads is, at least it should be labeled basement, have the address, this, uh, some other information on it, and the whole layout of the basement, uh, including, uh, all the dimensions. So, and that wasn't on the drawing and that's why we...
Including, uh, apartment dwellers' stories, I mean, the whole, the whole basement from front to back.
Right, front, back, side to side, yeah.
Yeah. Can I make a comment about that?
Yeah.
That when it, when it came to Becky, she should have looked that over and said, "It doesn't have this, it doesn't have a proper site plan." She could have rejected on the spot.
Can Becky make a comment?
Yeah.
Becky told her the drawing was inadequate.
Okay. So I mean, you should, you should have rejected it, said, "I can't accept it."
No, you can't do that. You know, you can say that it's not, but if she, if she wants to come to the meeting...
Yeah.
Then she can come to the meeting. You know, I mean, you can't force somebody to...
I mean, just, just to, uh, just not to waste your time, you know? It's everyone's waste of time. You're on your own time now. You know, just to clarify it.
All we can do is...
It would be more streamlined.
And, and that's what we've done for years. So, um, I've done it a zillion times. This time Becky did it. And you do, you try to help people out.
Right.
And sometimes people are, uh, accepting of the help and sometimes they're not.
So basically she told them, "No, go ahead," and she still submitted it, yeah.
Well, I agree with this board too, to be, um, persistent on the applications being complete, especially the drawings, because this is a board that changes. Two years, 10 years, 20 years from now, a different board may have an opportunity to look at it for something else and look at a drawing that's incomplete and say, "Well, where was the furnace in relation to the people?"
Yeah, that's a record too.
Is, is the furnace in a mechanical room? What is the construction of that mechanical room? Is there flammable, you know? I just, I agree with you 100%.
You have a list of requirements. You don't wanna, of what you need, you don't wanna vary from those. Because if you do it, we're gonna set a precedent.
Yes.
And you're gonna have everybody coming along, this is all so-and-so had. You, everybody, if everybody plays by the same rules and follows the same guidelines, then no one can, can, you know, claim credit, you know, preferential treatment or anything like that. You're all treated the same. If there were somebody else that came in and their plan was like that, you can tell them the same thing. Your plans are inadequate, you need to come back with proper plans and, uh, then we, then we can make a decision.
Well, all, all those are good comments. Um, the only thing we've kind of got to do is make sure that, you know, if... She hasn't held her meeting. She said she's already got two meetings scheduled. If she, if she holds those two meetings, she's in violation. Um, okay, so moving along to chair report. So, um, it's been fairly active, uh, even though you don't see it on the agenda. So, um, we had an applicant that, uh, applied for, uh, or that submitted a, uh, application for planning, then withdrew the application and stopped payment on their check after it's been positive. So, uh, that one is in the legal system. Who else? What's that?
What's that?
Uh, I don't really wanna say names. Then, uh, um... What's, what's the nursing home's proper name?
Village Rehab.
What is it?
Village Rehab.
Village Rehab. So Village Rehab has been in contact with us. They're gonna do an expansion. I don't know, have they done the application?
Hasn't turned it out.
So they picked up an application. They've, uh, um, they're in process. So once that comes in, uh, we're gonna do a, a meeting and that will be with the building department, the fire department, uh, police, planning, engineering, um, and that will be before it comes to the planning commission. So what they'd like to do, we did this before on, on their last major expansion. And what it did was streamline the process, rather than them come in with drawings, say, and we say, "Okay, this and this and this." Let them have the meetings with everybody involved and then come up with the drawings. And then it, it made the process go a whole lot better. So we'll see them and, uh, and go through the process, but the process will be handled a lot by the planners and the engineers in between our meetings. If everybody is okay with that.
Worked the last time.
Yeah, it, it worked real well.
There are these that called me about two months ago. We talked about plan submission, how many plans he needs. Chuck?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sort of waiting for the plan. Yeah, Sherman.
So that's, uh, so that's in process. So I kind of expect to have, the last that I talked to them, they had hoped to have a preliminary meeting, uh, beginning for the middle of this coming month, for this month, September, and then have it come to us in October. That's, that's their plans. So hopefully it's on our next agenda. And that'll be, that'll be a nice addition. So it won't be as, I thought the project was gonna be similar in size to the other, to the last one, but it's not. But I, I really haven't asked them how many beds this is gonna be. What is, isn't it assisted living?
Assisted living corridor, it'd be like small apartments.
Yeah.
And another way you have to go by state guidelines this time?
Yes. But they really sound like they've got, I don't know, um, uh, if I should say, but, um, they're really gonna have a nice community. They're talking about, uh, busing. You know, have a, a bus and a shuttle service to take people to the mall, to the doctors. You know, they're gonna go to the, go to this shopping center on this day, this shopping center on this day. Uh, go here. Uh, you can, you schedule your doctor's appointments, uh, with them. I mean, it's gonna be, um, and then they'll have, since it's assisted living, it really sounds like they're, uh, well thought out there.
I think it's a real program that you're gonna have to take or not take, you know, depending on your capabilities of taking care of yourself. So I, I think it's great.
We did talk to Sherman about that, about, when was the last addition? About seven, eight years ago?
When we did West Main Street.
Uh, what was that?
When we did the West Main Water.
Yeah, when was that, seven or eight years ago?
Oh, five.
Whatever it was, uh, we talked to him, I, we said, "If you, you can do future expansion, we want a secondary road coming in there."
Right.
And, and two months ago, when Chuck called, I said this, repeated the same thing, that the fire department and I wanted an additional access road for emergency access and better traffic flow.
Oh, good. It's glad, I'm glad you brought that up. Because that was talked about. And where would you suggest that road be?
Well, probably to the west, to the big existing building. You know, then just, just outside the village limits, I guess. I'm not quite sure where the...
No, they, they, they own property...
Does it go into the township, the wooded area?
No, that's theirs. That's in the village. Where the, where the village signs are, that's, that's, uh, the nursing home property.
As I say, is that real close to where the woods is at? Never in line with the woods?
Well, where, where the, where the village signs are, that's, that's part of the woods and that's their property line.
Yeah. And that's kind of like the suggested area to go, bring it around, around the back somewhere. I'm not quite sure how they lay that out, but that's for their engineer to decide.
So we may have to put the village signs on really high posts.
Just drive a little bit down the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so that's pretty much what I've been doing. I'd like to say that I was really impressed with the seminar that we had last year, or last month, by the lighting guys.
Yeah, that was...
I, I thought, I, I thought that was quite interesting.
I learned a lot. I mean, I just, uh, he was good. He was field and...
Yeah, so did she. It, it was interesting. So now with the, with the LED lighting coming on, we've got a little bit of the background of, you know, what to look for. Okay, so anything else? Okay, uh, so kind of next month, we should have a full meeting. Hopefully we can get everybody here. A motion to adjourn?
Second?
How in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so be it.
Okay, what time?
7:30, the first Monday of October.
8:13.
Oh, 8:13? Oh, okay.
Thank you Becky.
Yeah, yeah, 8:14. Thank you Becky.